Now seven o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting order and ask you to adjourn and say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. I'd like if you'd call the roll please.
Harlan Queen here. Ray McPhee.
Here.
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Martin Meyer. Bob Nelson.
Here.
Sam Powers.
Here.
Ron Richards.
Here.
Allison Ritter. Here. Thank you.
Okay, we do have a quorum. First item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. I'd ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We approved the agenda. Are there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved and again a reminder to each of the council members that if there is an item that you have a conflict of interest, please notify the entire council prior to voting. You have before you in your packages the minutes from the May 20th council meeting. I'd ask for a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the May 20th council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the May 20th council meeting. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is our claims. Bills in between are $137,540.95. I'd ask for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve bills in between of $137,540.95.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve those bills in between. Are there any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Under current claims, we do have a change. The current claims are $190,214.32. That's a decrease of $2 due to credit that the golf course got on some insecticide. I also want to make some comments on the current claims before you vote. You'll notice there's a current claim for $73,001.1 dollars and some cents from Manzana. That is a overrun that we had in the 26th Street Water Project. We are, I just wanted to call back to your attention, the original estimate for that was right about $30,000 and that was the rock saw bill that was used to cut those trenches. We're using a custom construction procedure that is relatively untried and anticipated to be substantially less than using a jackhammer, which proved to be the case, which however, we had anticipated to get about 150 feet of trenches dug per day and that machine was only able to do 40 to 50 feet due to the conditions that they were in. As a result, that cost overrun was quite significant and I wanted to bring that to the council's attention. We've been discussing this and how we're going to handle this with the water, with the district that was formed. Admin finance has undertaken along with Public Works and we also need to get with you Garland to make sure what we're doing is, what we decide is copacetic with the law. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention. We don't know the total cost of the project yet. We're about 65% complete and delayed due to weather and of course the, the rock saw did not make the progress that we had anticipated. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. With that said, I would ask for an approval of current claims for $190,214.32.
I'll make a motion to approve the current claims for $190,214.32.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve those current claims. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You also have in your packages Wells Fargo credit card charges for $6,416.80. I would ask for a motion to approve those.
Make a motion to approve Wells Fargo credit cards in the amount of $6,416.80.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the credit card charges. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any communications from the public? Seeing none. Move on. We do have a public hearing at 7:10. We can look at the personnel actions A through J. I would accept a motion to approve those personnel actions.
I'd like to make a motion to approve personnel actions A through J.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve personnel actions A through J. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on into committee reports, administrative and finance. Bob, I know we met today, it was a long meeting, but I may have to stop you to start the public hearing.
Okay.
I'm not interrupting out of disrespect of officials.
It's fine, you can stop me now if you want. Admin finance, Matt Day, City Hall, Mayor Cotty, Bill, Misty, Tracy, Scott, and I were present. Working from two sheets here, indulging. Full business item, evening, Suns Mining meeting update. The mayor, I mentioned to us today, we now have a new federal agency that the city gets to deal with, the Bureau of Land Management. So discussions are ongoing. I jokingly asked if there was another federal government, federal department we could get involved here. We'll just, we'll get them all. Discussions are ongoing and it has to do with mineral rights. Who actually has the mineral rights for the product out there? New business items, the mayor had talked with us about biochar. That's a product that can be made from the chips out of the, from the land, the brush piles. He's had a number of conversations with folks that deal in biochar from Colorado, Wyoming, and we're also, I'm going to be looking at talking with the feed line also and try to recoup some cost out of those chips. Misty reviewed her monthly reports that she'll talk with you about later on. We talked about the airport fueling system. We mentioned last meeting that on June 14th, I believe, the folks that are currently providing the fuel service at the airport will no longer be providing that service. City needs to make a decision about what they're going to do to provide fuel for the airplanes. We looked at the cost of the equipment itself, potential costs of purchasing the gas that's left in the tanks, courtesy car, insurance costs. Initial costs we're looking at are somewhere around $35,000. The committee agreed to go ahead and have a contract written up, have the city's attorney take a look at that, and then prepare all those detailed costs for your consideration at the next council meeting to decide whether that's something you feel the city should do. A little harder for airplanes to fly if they don't have fuel. If we want to attract the hot springs, that's certainly a service that I think we need to consider and decide what we're going to do. We also talked about the 26th Street Water Project that the mayor had talked about in his opening statements. I'll make a longer statement about that from Public Works.
Excuse me, Bob, the time is 7:10. I'd like to officially open the hearing. You have in your packages an airport zoning regulation 27-8.04.14 and we want to get input from the public prior to taking this to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a recommendation. Obviously, once they make their recommendation, that will come back to the council for a final vote, but we do want to get early public input and that's why we're having the public hearing, set the public hearing to have it tonight. Are there any comments from the audience as far as, as far as what this zoning regulation should or should not include? Hearing none. Are there any comments from the council? I know, Bill, you're on the Airport Advisory Committee and have looked at this closely.
Yeah, I apologize. I've got a couple of slightly different versions, so I did find one typo.
So if it's on the old version, I apologize.
If it's on the new version in paragraph 14.02, we've, the last sentence before paragraph 1403, there's a reference to the BXC. I think that should be PZC, referring to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Also, I guess I would just like to put a question out. In section 14.13, we have a fairly long discussion about how close we can have another airport. And my incomplete understanding is that that is actually governed by FAA regulations. And my question would be, does that section need to be in our zoning ordinance? The thought being if it's already in the FAA regulations, if those regulations change, then we need to make sure we change our ordinance. However, it would also say that even if they're there and it's in our ordinance, then we can manage it internally. Given the thought, the size of community we are, the chances of another airport going in is probably fairly low. If we can drop that, that whole section, it may, it may simplify our ordinance a little bit.
Which one were you on?
The 14.13 spacing and classification of additional airports.
Thank you. We also don't own that area or have it zoned in the city. So do we even have the right to? The FAA has the right obviously, but does the city even have the right to tell people in the county what they need to do because our city zoning wouldn't apply there? Am I correct, Garland?
Yeah, and then we waived the.
We did waive that.
Three miles.
So we don't even have this right. So that's a good point.
Okay, and then two more sections down the pipe. Section 14.15, official airport noise zone map. I called Rod Sen with K L J and had a few questions for him today and asked him if he had a recommendation on what noise levels we might list as maximum noise levels. And what he told me is that general aviation airports rarely even have noise limitations, that those are typically, when you have commercial flights coming in and out, is when you're going to have noise regulations and noise zones for specific areas. So based on that input, I would say that we could probably remove the, the sections that discuss zone, noise maps. And that would again simplify the ordinance. It would give the city finance officer one last document to certify. And I think that is the extent of my comments.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Any other comments from the council?
Alison, or go ahead, Bill, or Bob. Under definitions, second page, definition number five. Structure means any object constructed or installed by humans. I'm not sure Wells is going to install it. I don't know if you actually need to say that.
The sheet?
Even if it's a machine, I think it's probably going to be human directed. It's not a deal breaker for me, it's just interesting. If humans aren't going to install it, who is? Let's see, section 14-10, first sentence, except as otherwise provided in this article, it shall be unlawful to place any land located within his zone hereby. Should that read, it shall be unlawful to place on any land transformer stations, type of transmissions. I think on should be there. Section 14-13, Bill's already spoken to that. I agree with him for the same reasons and what Misty was talking about. We don't govern that land outside of there. I don't see how we can tell moral that if they want an airport, they can't have it. I agree with Bill.
But the FAA can.
Right, the FAA can, but I wonder why it needs to be in our ordinance. And then the last one that I highlighted is 14-16, statement of purpose for airport zone A. This zone provides for development around the airport. What I look, what I read around, that's outside the annexed area that we, that we annex. And our commitment to anybody outside the airport is that we would not do anything with that. We would not place any kind of restrictions on the land outside of the airport. So I'm wondering if that needs to be in there.
Have you seen a map of the zone? Because I think that, I think that can come wrong, but that would be inside the wildlife fence and we do have use like the shooting club, it's on airport land, but outside that. So do we have a map of what outlines zone A? We could answer that question, which way that should be entered in.
Sorry?
Is that, is, Bill has it. So is zone A just what's inside the wildlife fence and considered for aviation use only?
I believe inside zone A is probably within the wildlife fence, but this is an eight and a half by 11, reduced down from a full-size drawing and my eyes aren't that good, but I think there is airport property beyond zones A and B, so it probably is a valid statement, but it doesn't go beyond our property.
Okay, thank you.
I think we'll take that as a written comment that needs to be looked at.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Alison, did you have anything from the planning zoning perspective?
Yeah, that came up a couple of times in planning zoning, the FAA question and regarding our own ordinances and how the two should fit together. And it, and I think that's why it's good to have this many eyes on it because it was a question regarding where do we ordinance and which one is FAA? So I think that will go back to planning and zoning and we can look at that closer.
And one more. I was able to receive an electronic copy of the ALB, the.
Layout plan?
Airport layout plan, thank you, Misty, from Rod today. And I did forward that on to Scott and that does have all of the drawings, much better quality than this. And so I think that will be available if there's any questions, what's in, what's out. So we now have the resources in-house that we can look closely and answer those questions and not have to say, well, I think that's probably outside of A but inside our property line. So, and was that a request to forward that on to you also, Misty?
I have it, we've had it.
Oh, okay.
It's in our material files. So thank you, Bill.
And what we'll do is forward these comments on to development coordinator who will then bring them to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I appreciate the thorough look and again, not trying to reinvent the wheel, you know, we have taken a sample used in another community and obviously our situation is different. We aren't, the city limits are not contiguous with the airport and so a lot of these would apply to, only to that, that kind of community. Are there any other comments or questions concerning this zoning regulation?
Do you want to come up to the microphone here?
Go ahead, please come up to the mic and.
Don't have my copy. I'll pick a word on this, however. There's a statement on there that indicates that the airport manager is responsible to make the decision as to what, if someone would come into the airport and ask a specific project to be completed, that it's the airport manager's responsibility. I think that needs to be changed to a split where the city council handles that, the airport manager would administer that decision.
Would you like me to read this section?
Please.
Because I have it. It shall be the duty of the airport manager and/or the development coordinator to administer and enforce the regulations prescribed. Applications for permits and variances shall be made to the airport manager upon a form furnished by the city. Applications which are in this section to be decided by the airport manager shall be considered in a timely manner, in granted or denied. Applications for a new physical project shall be transmitted to the airport manager and then to the development coordinator. If the topic of the application involves a topic of a technical nature, the project may be referred to the airport advisory committee for comments and recommendations. The airport advisory committee will make their recommendations to the planning and zoning commission for their review and the P and Z recommendations will be sent to the city council for its review and decision.
That must be a different one than what we were conceived. Refer to the first one you talked about.
There's been several iterations, so.
Does that sound okay to you then? Okay, and you're Don Connor?
Don Connor, yes.
And Don, thank you for, for reviewing the version you had and calling to us. We appreciate that because we, we did ask, and Don's on the airport advisory committee and, and we did ask them to take a look at it and I appreciate Don taking the time to review what he had and getting back with us.
Don, when you get a chance, section 14, or 14 dot 14, I think addresses your concern, its requirements and procedures for appeals of decisions. Any person agreed or taxpayer affected by any decision of the airport manager made in his administration of this article or any governing body of a political subdivision is of the opinion that a decision of the airport manager is an improper application of these regula, of these regulations, they may appeal to the Hot Springs City Council. So when I read the section that Misty read to you, I had the same concerns, but I think the ordinance does address that anybody can always come to the council and ask for a different outcome than, than one that was, you know, given prior to the council review. So it looks like it's covered for you. I think you did, thank you.
Okay, are there any other comments? Hearing none. We'll go ahead and close the, go ahead and close the hearing at this time and there'll be no action taken and we'll continue with the report.
We left off talking about the suspended sidewalk. The mayor is putting together a package to approach the state with about why we feel strongly that the state should be fighting that sidewalk and not the city, again from a safety standpoint. It's the feeling that the state should, should fight that cause. The last thing we talked about was a request from the development coordinator to reimburse half of his phone charges. He uses his personal phone to conduct city business and it's policy. There's an ordinance that allows that to happen. The council will decide who's eligible for that and the recommendation. The feeling of the committee is that in Scott's position, he's contacted an awful lot of contractors and other folks that need him on different job sites throughout the day. It's less expensive for us, it's $25 a month to reimburse him for his personal phone use, or it's 55 a month, Misty?
If he has a smartphone.
Yeah, if the city provides the phone. If he's willing to use his personal device, if he's aware that, he has a form signed and the big thing about it is that he's aware if he uses it for city business. If there's any questions about his, his actions or his decisions or his communications that are made while he's using that phone for city business, then that phone needs to be made available. His information needs to be taken over. So it was our recommendation to reimburse him for the use of his phone. He also talked about mileage reimbursement. He uses his personal vehicle and the committee feels that the city needs to provide that vehicle and there are a couple of options currently, or at least one option as far as sharing a van with Tracy to do his city business. And then potentially look at other excess vehicles that might become available within the city to provide that for him. The feeling is he needs an official-looking vehicle so that everybody knows he's representing the city when he's on the job sites and has the authority of the government. The next meeting will be first Monday in July and I did write down that.
We're going to have a special meeting on the 17th.
Thank you, Misty. And that special meeting will be to address strictly the airport fueling system and make sure that all the information that you folks have on your, in your council packet is accurate and up to date so you can make an informed decision at that city council meeting.
Thank you, Bob. Moving on, on the agenda, Airport Advisory Committee, Bill.
Yeah, the committee met on Thursday, May 30th at 8 o'clock at the airport. Members of the committee present were Shane Miller, Larry Vetterman, Don Connor, Georgia Holmes, Myrna and Danny Lewis. Also present were Gordon Brooks from the city, were Tracy Bastian, Scott Soggy, Ed Jensen, Don Johnson, Amanda Jensen. From K L J was Rod Sen and also present were Mayor Cotty and myself. Update on the compass rose. There will be seven members from the 99s will be here to begin layout on Friday, June 7th and they'll then paint the compass rose on Saturday, the 8th. The group has raised over $1,300 and that'll cover most of the cost of the paint and getting those folks here. They're also going to be having a barbecue lunch at noon as a fundraiser out at the airport and those donations for that lunch will cover the remainder of the cost of that effort. Rod Sen provided us some information that the 2019 grant applications are due at the end of June and they'll be working with the city to submit those applications. On all FAA grants, they require that the city or the, the grant applicant state on how, state how that entity will provide funding for their share. In our case, if we apply for an FAA. In our case, if we apply for an FAA grant, the feds pay 90%, the state DOT pays 5%, and the city's responsible for 5%. If we apply for a grant for a 10-unit T hangar, the estimated cost for that is about $900,000, so the city's portion would be about $45,000. So, we would have to give them a, some potential options of how we would cover that. Certainly, our first choice would be proceeds from the mining operation, but those mining operations would have to take place in order for that to happen. Another option would be to utilize future years' grant money. That is not really a preferable option because we would then have to front the money, so we'd still have to come up with $45,000 and then pay ourselves back in future years. Or we could scale back on the project somehow, either reduce the number of hangers or not provide a paved taxiway in front of all or part of the hangers. But there would still be, whatever we spend, there's still 5% that we owe. So, we'll be working with K L J this month to determine our path forward on that. As you just heard, we passed out the zoning ordinance chapter, and again, thank you, Don, for taking the time to look at that and giving us feedback. The old hangar that we've talked about so much has developed a reoccurring leak in the roof, and we have cost estimates to repair that that range anywhere from $9,522 up to a full roof replacement, or at least I hope it's a full roof replacement, of $43,800. So, Scott and Ed and Tracy will continue to work that and come up with a plan for what we might be able to do about that. Again, the committee received an update on the fuel system, as we've discussed from Admin Finance. And now for a little more fun update. We had the family fly-in fun day. Started off with tethered balloon rides at 6:00 AM, I missed those. We did have 14, or I'm sorry, 15 flower bombardiers between the ages of 8 and 14, and then one senior citizen was given a mercy ride later on, and I did pretty good. 25 foot and a few inches on the first drop, thank you very much. We also had static displays. South Dakota Air National Guard brought down a Blackhawk air ambulance. We had a fixed-wing air ambulance also. Civil Air Patrol had a booth. And then, at 1:00 PM, we had a ping-pong drop. And good news, bad news, they missed the drop zone just a little bit and happened to hit the taxiway, and by golly, those ping-pong balls went everywhere, and the kids had a blast. So, the next meeting will be Thursday, June 27th, at 8:00 AM at the airport.
Thank you, Bill. And I know, I'm glad you didn't blame the pilot for your second drop distance like you did earlier today.
Well, there is a proverb that says, "Even a fool, when he is silent, is considered wise."
Okay, thank you. Custer Falls River Waste Management District.
Next meeting will be 11th of July, 7:00 PM here at Hill City Center.
Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, Harley.
The next meeting will be June 5th at 5:00 at the library.
Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, Allison.
Our next meeting is June 13th at noon at the Plunge, but there was a couple of updates that Chris wanted the council to know. She wanted to let you guys know that Joshua Johnson became a lifeguard instructor. Kyle Home, uh-oh, Holcomb, there we go, Kathy Rinn and Cheyenne Stewart just became water safety instructors, which is very good to have, we have to have those for all swimming lessons. And also, she wanted to let you guys know that she came up, the Evans Plunge, I forgot to mention this last time, committee came up with an idea, she's desperately, Chris is desperately needing some idea to try to keep lifeguards on, and so she came up with an incentive program that was briefly discussed, I think probably last month, in Admin Finance. But she would like to go ahead and push it through. It was agreed upon, and everybody at the committee, that that was a really good idea to try to get lifeguards to stay on. So, there'll be more details coming, so you have that information about that incentive program that she would like us to consider in order to keep the lifeguards there and working through the busy season. So, like I said, our next meeting is June 13th at noon.
Thank you, Allison. Marty is not here tonight. We have Planning and Zoning Commission.
Planning and Zoning meets June 19th at 7:00 PM at City Hall.
Public Safety, Bill.
Okay, well, first of all, the next meeting will be Wednesday, June 19th, at 2:00 PM at City Hall. I do, however, have a report. At the last meeting, a resident from Hill City made a public complaint against one of our officers. And in that meeting, we said that we would investigate the complaint and the allegations and that, and that we would provide a report back. And because those allegations were made publicly, we are giving the report publicly. In addition, the mayor will send Mr. Griswold a letter and a copy of this report. So, this is the Public Safety Committee review of the Calvin Griswold complaint. On Tuesday, May 21st, 2019, the mayor and council persons Nelson, Ritter, Bush and Lukens met at City Hall in the mayor's office to review dash and body camera recordings of the April 6, 2019 traffic stop of Calvin Griswold by Officer Zach Schaefer of the Hot Springs Police Department in order to determine the validity of the complaints and accusations made by Mr. Griswold verbally and in a letter delivered at the May 20, 2019 Hot Springs City Council meeting. It has been the practice that in the event of a complaint, we will only provide a general statement regarding if the complaint was received and whether or not the investigation deemed the complaint to be credible, and we do not address specific details. However, in this case, since allegations were made against one of our officers in a public forum, we believe the public and the entire council has the right to hear the details and results of the promised investigation. Based on our reviews of the recordings, Mr. Griswold's letter and the arrest report, we offer the following findings. One, dash camera clearly shows Mr. Griswold running the stop sign which warranted the traffic stop. Two, significant points of interest, as depicted on the recordings, are as follows. A, when stopped, Officer Schaefer approached the vehicle, identified himself and gave the reason for the stop, running a stop sign, and then asked, "Is there a reason they aren't all buckled up in there?", to which Mr. Griswold replied, "Just got started getting your seatbelts on, in the process." Officer Schaefer replied, "That should definitely be done before you leave." He was referring to two of Mr. Griswold's children were not, did not have their seatbelts on, one of the children did. Mr. Griswold stated he had been in Butler Park with the children playing soccer. He was first observed at 14th and Detroit and was stopped at 15th and Canton. I only mention this to indicate the general distance traveled without ensuring the children were properly restrained. Officer Schaefer reviewed the registration and insurance card, told Mr. Griswold to stay in the vehicle, and took the driver's license to his vehicle where it was reviewed and the ticket was written. Officer Schaefer returned to Mr. Griswold's vehicle and began explaining that he was going to cut him a break on the stop sign violation and one of the seatbelt violations. At that time, Mr. Griswold commented that "that was tight" and stated he wanted to see this stop sign and began getting out of the car. The dash and body camera images and audio show Officer Schaefer verbally instructing Mr. Griswold to stay in the vehicle three times, twice while Mr. Griswold is attempting to get out of his vehicle, and a third time when he is standing outside the vehicle. Officer Schaefer then pushed Mr. Griswold in the chest area in an, in an attempt to contain him. At this point, Mr. Griswold responds by moving his left arm to break free from Officer Schaefer, and in the process knocks Officer Schaefer's body camera off his uniform and onto the ground. At this point, Officer Schaefer moves back, draws his taser, instructs Mr. Griswold to put his hands behind his back and turn around and places him under arrest. Mr. Griswold alleged to this council, and I quote, "During the incident, the video shows no aggression on my part in any way. From a subjective standpoint, if we consider tone of voice and demeanor, Mr. Griswold appeared to be displeased with receiving a ticket. From an objective standpoint, that is, reviewing Mr. Griswold's behavior or observable acts, by him getting out of the vehicle while ignoring Officer Schaefer's strong commands to stay in the vehicle and the ensuing contact that resulted in the body camera being knocked to the ground, we do not agree with Mr. Griswold's statement regarding his lack of aggression." Mr. Griswold relayed statements that his children made during the process. Audio quality was not such that the words of the children could be determined. Now, as unfortunate as it is that the children had to view the actions leading to the arrest of their father, the fact remains, had Mr. Griswold complied with Officer Schaefer's instructions, there would have been no actions and subsequent arrest. Mr. Griswold stated, "He had my car towed away and then set bail at $500 cash on a The towing of vehicles when the suspect is arrested is standard procedure. Police officers do not set bail, that is done by the clerk of court as noted on the arrest report. The day of the week is irrelevant for arranging bail, as that can be done at any time. Mr. Griswold stated that when Captain Wayneman arrived, that the captain asked, and I quote, "Who are you going to call to get the kids? You have 30 seconds to tell me, or we will take them to child services. We are busy." As I was thinking what to do, he says, "You have 10 seconds to tell me," end quote. A review of the video shows that at about 8 minutes 18 seconds into the stop, Officer Schaefer asked if there was someone that could be called to get the kids, to which Mr. Griswold answered, "No." At about 9 minutes 12 seconds into the stop, Officer Schaefer asked again if there was someone that could be called. Mr. Griswold indicated his wife was in Hill City and had no car, and then went out, went on to express his opinion about the traffic stop and Officer Schaefer's actions. At about 13 minutes 42 seconds into the stop, Captain Wayneman, after being briefed by Officer Schaefer, again, looked to solidify the placement of the children with Mr. Griswold. At about 14 minutes 42 seconds into the stop, Captain Wayneman was told Mrs. Griswold's phone number, called her and made arrangements for a friend in Hot Springs with the approval of DSS, or Department of Social Services, to get the children. A review of the timeline indicates that Mr. Griswold had over five minutes to consider who to be called to pick up his children and not just a short moment when Captain Wayneman first talked, first spoke to him. Regarding care and concern for the children, Mr. Griswold was cuffed and taken to the police car at 8 minutes 10 seconds into the stop. Officer Schaefer checked on the children and spoke to them at 9 minutes 13 seconds into the stop. Officer Schaefer was back with the children at 12 minutes 7 seconds into the stop. Deputy Liz Rapnis arrived, was briefed, and was with the children at 15 minutes 43 seconds into the stop until the family friend arrived. Captain Wayneman came to the car at 16 minutes 42 seconds into the stop to give the children some stickers. In his letter, Mr. Griswold states, and I quote, "To me, one of the most crucial traits an officer must show is credibility and restraint. The huge disparity between the video and his arrest report kills this credibility. What bothers me so much is his willingness to change the story to fit his narrative at my expense and damage," end quote. The arrest report, when compared to the video, is accurate and we found no discrepancies. This finding is consistent with that of the state's attorney's statement during the May 20 council meeting. Regarding restraint, we believe Officer Schaefer showed appropriate restraint in that when faced with an unknown threat, chose to back away from the threat after the initial attempt to contain Mr. Griswold in the vehicle. He then chose a non-lethal means to defend himself by drawing the taser, and he stayed aware of and engaged in the situation by observing Mr. Griswold, and finally, and, excuse me, and he stayed aware of and engaged in the situation by observing Mr. Griswold, finally complying with his instructions to turn around, and therefore did not unnecessarily discharge the taser. In summary, the Public Safety Committee finds that Officer Schaefer and Captain Wayneman acted professionally and appropriately in this matter, and that the allegations made by Mr. and Mrs. Griswold are unfounded. Chief Close has reviewed the complaint independently from the Public Safety Committee and found Officer Schaefer and Captain Wayneman's actions to be appropriate. As with any review, we look to see if the allegations are supported by the facts and if the appropriate action, and if they are appropriate actions, will be taken. In this case, the facts did not support the allegations. We also try to look at the overall event and the practices to identify opportunities for improvement. In this case, we were careful to look to make sure the children were cared for during the event and believed they were. We did, however, see a potential opportunity to provide some additional verbal reassurance to the children in the early portions of the stop. Chief Close and his team will be in discussions as to how these interactions can be improved in the future. Once again, if Mr. Griswold had complied with Officer Schaefer's instructions to stay in the vehicle, no incident and subsequent arrest would have occurred. When complaints are filed, we will objectively investigate them. However, we strongly request and encourage that if there is a complaint, it be filed with the chief of police or at City Hall, where it will be forwarded to Public Safety Committee. When this protocol is followed, it allows for an appropriate level of confidentiality and discretion to be applied when reporting the findings. We will not cover up wrongdoing, but neither will we allow public allegations of our officers to go unaddressed in the same public forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Allison, Bob, do you have any comments that you wish to add to the report?
What I'm going to read to you is from Mr. Griswold's letter to us, and it's going to repeat some of what Bill said. to repeat some of what Bill said. But I highlighted this particular section because it's really what drove what I wanted to see in the arrest report and in the videos. So this is all quoted from Mr. Griswold. "I'm very thankful for video during the stop. Officer Schaefer wrote a very different story in his arrest report than what the video shows. He already told me three times to get back in before he pushed me. He also said I knocked off his body camera during the struggle. The huge disparity between the video and his arrest report kills his credibility. What bothers me so much is his willingness to change the story to fit his narrative at my expense and damage. As to his willingness to write an arrest report far different than what occurred, to me, that is a character issue that I'm not sure can be rectified." So what I did after I read that is, after I read the arrest report, and I noted statements that were made by Officer Schaefer in the arrest report to see if the video supported his narrative in the arrest report. And I came up with 12 things that I wanted to see from the videos. Explanation to the driver who went why, and why kids weren't buckled. And as I watched the video, I checked off every one of these. Asked the driver for the information, instructed driver to stay in the vehicle. Driver exits vehicle, told to get back in three times. Driver ignores instruction to stay in vehicle. Attempted to push driver back in vehicle, not sure of intentions. And for me, it's easy to pass judgment when you watch the whole video, or it would be easy to pass a different judgment. But I think what's important to remember is that all we can do is judge the actions that are taken by any officer at that point in time. What do they know about what's going on? Not what happens 15 or 20 minutes later, but are their actions appropriate for that moment in time? Driver pushed officer back away from the door of his vehicle. Officer stepped back and drew taser, picked the body camera up off the ground, placed the driver in the vehicle, and called Captain Wayneman to help with the kids. Those were just the ones that came to me initially. But in reviewing the video, Mr. Griswold's statements are not supported at all. There is not a huge disparity between the video and his arrest report. Everything that's in his arrest report is in fact in those videos. I agree with everything that Bill said. I agree that the stop was appropriate. Unfortunately, what happened is not the officer's fault. I have a broken record here. We want Mayberry, that's not the reality. What happened, Officer Schaefer doesn't know that Mr. Griswold didn't have bad intentions. Doesn't know that he did. So he did everything he could to protect his own safety and make sure he went home with his family that night. And I support what Bill had said and feel that Officer Schaefer did everything professional and as he should.
Allison.
I just wanted to note that Chief Close gave us some information that was really helpful, giving us the videos regarding why it's so important for people to stay in their vehicles. Originally, I thought just stop looking, get out of the car to look at a stop sign seen benign, until you see the videos of what happens when people are getting out of their vehicles and police being shot or killed or attacked. So I really appreciated having that viewpoint because it wasn't something I had really considered through that view. So I just wanted to make sure that we are all leaving the police no question regarding our intent and following their rules and requests, and I think we could have avoided this very easily.
Okay, thank you very much. I know that, I believe that you all, as a council, did receive a video and an email from Mr. Griswold, and that video omitted several moments. I don't remember which camera it was.
The body cam video omitted somewhat over nine, the last nine minutes.
Okay. And so that's why we have on the agenda tonight an executive session. If there's anyone on the council that would want to view that video in its entirety, we will go ahead and adjourn to executive session. If not, and you're satisfied with the report of the Public Safety Committee, we can excuse After reviewing the report, looking at the videos twice, I concur with the Safety Committee's report, and I will draft a letter attaching that report, and we will send it to Mr. Griswold saying that we found no discrepancies in the actions of our police. And again, I want to thank you all for the extra time and effort that we put into it. Those body cameras are impartial judge, and certainly we are not here to protect any malfeasance that should occur. If our police officers make an error, we will hold them responsible. But on the other hand, we also want to make sure that if they're publicly accused, that we also set that record straight, because they risk their lives for our safety every time they answer a call that's unknown what they will face. And so again, I thank you, Public Safety, for the excellent report. Moving on, Public Works, Bob and Ray.
Public Works met at City Hall on May 28, 3 o'clock. I believe the mayor was there, Tracy was there, and Scott was there. We talked about the brush piles. Good progress is being made on those brush piles. The weather cooperates, and they're back at it again today. The files should be chipped before the July deadline. 805 South 11th Street or Catholican Avenue. City's still waiting on a reply from the ham radio club. Their next meeting is Thursday, June 6. The committee did agree to install a street sign at the intersection of Catholican Avenue and 11th Street. The 26th Street Water Project, I mentioned in Advent Finance, but I have a little more to say about that in Public Works. Work is progressing, but there are some weather delays. This project will cost significantly more than the $78,990 originally approved by the council. The cost for the rock saw alone is $73,000, and materials are estimated at $25,000. Equipment and labor costs also need to be considered. The Public Works and Advent Finance committees will need to determine what recommendation to make to the council on how to pay for costs that exceed their original estimate. We also talked about improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. That's been going on a while. It started out that the wet well cover needed to be replaced. It's metal, and because of the costly environment, it's pretty much been eaten up. So the original idea was just to replace that cover. We found that additional work on the walls of the wet well at the wastewater treatment plant are needed. Kim, Tracy, Scott, Cole, and myself met with Kurt's Construction a couple of weeks ago to discuss possible repairs. Kurt's Construction will provide the city with an estimate for repair of the walls of the wet well, and we'll still be looking for that estimate to come in.
That did come in today.
Okay.
145.
145,000.
Yes.
So that's a significant cost. We'll have to continue following that and see what could be done there. Ray, do you have any questions for us?
No, I haven't.
Okay. The next Public Works meeting, Works meeting, will be June 11, 3 o'clock at City Hall. I'll be out of town for that meeting. So either the mayor or Tracy or someone will need to decide if you want to have that one or delay it and postpone until the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Southern Hills Economic Development, Marty is not here. The Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, they gave the report last week. I just wanted to note that we do have, did have a late start this year on the golf season because of the weather. Warm weather has sped things up. I believe league begins tomorrow night, so we'll be having more and more activity out at our golf course. And our, congratulations to our girls' high school golf team who's at the state tournament as we speak, and trust that they're doing well. Volunteer Fire Department, Ron.
Next meeting will be the 11th of June, 7 p.m. with the Hostelry Volunteer Fire Department.
And Sam, Comprehensive Plan Coordinator?
No, I don't have.
Okay. Tonight on the agenda, we do have the second reading of Ordinance 1199, and that revises Chapter 15 of the Pond Brokers Amendment Section 15-14. And again, this fits a circumstance or situation that makes it easier for a victim of theft to get their items back. Would approve that at the, approve the first reading at the last meeting? I would accept a motion to approve the second reading of Ordinance 1199.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of Ordinance 1199 revising Chapter 15, Pond Brokers, to Amendment Section 15-14.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the second reading of this ordinance. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask Misty if you'd call the role, please.
Arlene Kane?
Yes.
Ray Echeppe?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Martin Meyer? Nope, sorry. Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Allison Ritterbusch?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That ordinance is approved. We have before you Resolution 2019-13, and this is a resolution in support for maintaining the current operations at the VA Healthcare here in Hot Springs. The reason that we want to do this, as we look for funding from the governor's office for our suspension sidewalk, it's important that we send a unified message that we do have a plan of development for Hot Springs, and one of those big plans is having the VA here. Our Save the VA Committee has done an outstanding job in coming up with a plan to serve our veterans, especially those that are suffering from PTSD and other addictive behaviors. And this resolution of support that you have in that package reaffirms our support of the VA Healthcare located here in Hot Springs, South Dakota. We are the veterans' town, and we are the veterans have a history of being a place where veterans can come and be healed and seek refuge. So I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2019-13.
I'll make a resolution to approve, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-13, a resolution of support for maintaining domiciliary hospital and outpatient clinic VA Healthcare in Hot Springs.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, do we approve this Resolution 2019-13? Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
Does this include, like, sending a letter, or it just says strongly encourages whatever? Are we also sending a letter to Veterans Administration?
There is a plan that later this summer of having the secretary of the Veterans Administration here in Hot Springs, and that would be something that certainly at that time that we can present him either with that resolution or for sure a verbal that the community is behind keeping the VA here.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
It's been a few years since VAs, as you said, the VAs kind of updated the community on where we're at. We've pretty much been in a holding pattern. The VA put their record of decision going forward with their proposal to close domiciliary in Hot Springs, close a hospital in Hot Springs, and move services around the city. With that being on hold, there just wasn't a lot going on. As we've looked at what we can do to stay relevant and keep this topic in front of people that we hope can reverse the decision about it. Representative Knoll, when she was running for governor, made some very positive comments about Hot Springs. Since she's been governor, she's also made some very positive comments about Hot Springs. I personally think she has a warm spot in her heart for Hot Springs. So Save the VA was looking at, well, what can we do next? What's our next big thing? So we talked about getting resolutions of support from the city. That's why it's on your agenda tonight. It's also on the agenda for the county commissioners for tomorrow. A resolution reaffirming our support for keeping the facility here. We also got letters of support from both Shedco and CHIP. So as we look at who kind of the players are for the Black Hills area in Hot Springs, those are the four people that we targeted. So the idea is to go back to Governor Knoll, since she's in a good position now to try to help with keeping it here. And as the mayor said, we want to show solidarity and keeping the facility here. I'm confident that the commissioners will also approve it. So it will be a package that will go forward with our next plan for getting governor's support for keeping the facility here. I hope you can fight in your hearts to approve the resolution. It was originally approved back in 2014, and we've got a new one in front of us. Enter the community. It's been eight years. Without your support, none of this would have happened. If the VA would have been allowed to go forward with their proposal, the VA would have been closed. Their original proposal was 2012. They wanted to close within fourteen, within four years. So in 2016, the domiciliary that is still up there active would not be there, the hospital would not be there, and it would strictly be an outpatient clinic and dialysis. So Save the VA, myself as a veteran, says thank you to the community for hanging in there with us, and we'll keep fighting the fight, and hopefully we can get this thing turned around.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of supporting Resolution 2019-13 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business? We have a possible motion in this discussion to approve the library cleaning contract. You do have a copy of that contract in your packages. I believe it's similar to the one we had the previous year, and the library is satisfied with the services that are being provided by Black Hills Special Services. I accept a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the 2019 library cleaning contract at a flat rate of 730 per month.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded and to approve that library cleaning contract. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, I would ask all those in favor to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have recently had our 2018 full audit, and we need to have an opportunity to present that both to the council and to the public. We're looking for a motion to establish a time for that to be held, Monday, the 17th of June at 6 p.m. I'd accept a motion to schedule that full audit readout and discussion.
I make a motion to schedule the 2018 full audit readout and discussion to be held at 6 p.m. on Monday, the 17th of June, before the regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second. Been moved and seconded to schedule the audit readout for the 17th. Any questions, comments, or discussion?
I think, Misty, you said in your, that you're going to put a quorum. Okay, I thought I, I just want to make sure I read that and remember that correctly. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries. The meeting is set. And we also have a possible motion and discussion to approve the climb Hot Springs event, and that would be scheduled in September. You do have some information on that in your packages. We need to approve it before we go to DOT for the road usage approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the climb Hot Springs event scheduled for September twenty-one, two thousand and nineteen. Approval needed for DOT roadway usage.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded that we approve the climb Hot Springs event scheduled for the twenty-first of September. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item deals with accepting the resignation of Larry Maury from the library board. Larry has served for several years on our board, a very valuable member of that board, and has decided that he wants to sit down. I would ask for a motion to accept his resignation with regret and appreciation.
I make a motion to accept the resignation of Larry Maury from the library board effective April twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we accept the resignation of Larry Maury. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And again, we want to thank Larry for his years of service and the valuable inputs that he's made, making our library the excellent library that it is. Moving on in the agenda, it's time for the finance officers' report. I'd ask Misty to, go ahead.
Thank you. In your packets, you have the year-to-date profit-loss summary report by fund. That gives you the month and year-to-date revenues and expenditures. The fund summary report, which lets you compare revenue and expenses actual to our budget. And the cash balance report includes the current balances in both our Wells Fargo, which is our main checking, and our Bank of the West checking accounts by fund. Also included in your packets are investment reports by institution and by investment type. It includes all of the cash assets of the city and also includes the detailed listing of the city-owned CDs. On May twentieth, we received the first half of our property tax levy. The amount collected and remitted by the county was four hundred and twenty thousand and change. This deposit helped to reduce the overall loss in the general fund year-to-date. We're still in the red by about seventy thousand. I imagine with our municipal sales tax collection, which ramps up in the summer months, next month, you'll see that general fund out of the red. Speaking of the municipal sales tax, that collection is up about fifty-three thousand six hundred dollars or nine point one percent over this time last year. The major increase is general sales and use tax collection, with fifty-two thousand seven hundred of that above total being attributed to this tax type. Although it's difficult to directly attribute this increase to the new internet sales tax collection, it is fair to say that it has contributed to it. The other tax collected and remitted in the municipal tax distribution is the liquor lodging and dining or gross receipts tax. This tax type is up less than one percent or nine hundred and nine dollars from this time last year. We talked about and set the meeting for the full audit readout. The reason we have the hour-long meeting before the council meetings is so that we can do a more detailed review with the auditors of the information provided in that report. There will still be a report during the regularly scheduled council meeting for that night. So, you are not required to attend that, but I will be doing a notice of quorum, and the public and all council members are invited to attend. During the next council meeting, you'll be presented with the first contingency transfer resolution and supplemental appropriation ordinance for two thousand and nineteen. Contingency is budget authority already approved in the two thousand and nineteen budget, so that doesn't use any new dollars. The supplemental appropriation ordinance are additions to the budget and utilize reserve funds or are the result of additional funding received. The items currently approved by council for contingency include a new laptop, upgrades to the city firewall, email servers, and spam filters, codification and compensation study expenses, and an electrical panel upgrade at the airport. So far, the total of these items is eighteen thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars. We budgeted fifty thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars in the contingency account for two thousand and nineteen. If we add nothing, this would leave thirty-two thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars in contingency for the rest of the year. If you remember, we'll do a second one as we get closer to the end of the year, if needed. The supplemental appropriation includes additional funding for snow removal, cemetery sign, the library, and the library additions are funded by library grants, which have been received. And the snow removal and the addition of some street repairs will be funded by unassigned fund balance. I have an update on the city website. You did receive an email from the city administrator on April twenty-ninth regarding the upgrades done by Robert Sharp and Associates. I think if you review the site, you would agree that there's still some work that needs to be done, and when Kim comes back, we're going to try to schedule a face-to-face with them to go through the website. In order to meet the statutory deadlines, I've already begun the necessary work to begin the two thousand and twenty municipal budget, which seems weird because we're just in the middle of the year. As most of you know, there's a lot of work that goes into those budget preparations. I've created the Excel budget revenue and expenditure worksheets, and we'll be working on calculating estimated expenses related to wages, payroll taxes, retirement, programs, compensation, group insurance, unemployment, property and liability insurance, telephone, electricity, propane, and loan payments. Once this step is done, I forward the worksheets to the department heads, who are then responsible for reviewing the pre-filled calculations and completing the remaining sections based on their department's needs and wants. When returned, the data is compiled, and we'll meet as a group again that worked real well last year to review the entire city budget big picture with each department. In July, the new council will determine the dates for our budget meetings. Council reviews the data and makes any necessary decisions or adjustments during these meetings. Typically, we schedule two dates and then additional dates if needed. The dates being considered for the council budget meetings are the twenty-third and twenty-fourth of July or the thirtieth of July and August first. If you will still be a council member at that time and you have anything scheduled during those dates, please let me know so that we can try to have as many of you in attendance as possible. Currently, I have two council members interested in attending the S D M L budget training on June twenty-fifth. June tenth is the deadline for R S V Ps, so let me know if you forgot to tell me and you're interested in, in attending. In PIER on July seventeenth will be the two thousand and nineteen elected officials workshop. This one-day training is packed with sessions that are valuable to newly-elected officials as well as those that have been previously in office. It's a basic crash course on local government. July fifth is the deadline for R S V Ps, so if you'd like to partake in that crash course, let me know by July fifth. And as a reminder, our administrative assistant, Mary Hardy, and I will be out of the office to attend the two thousand and nineteen South Dakota Governmental Human Resource Association and Governmental Finance Officer School in PIER. That's June eleventh through the fourteenth. It's a Tuesday through a Friday. Assistant Finance Officer Karen Bingley and Utility Billing clerk Bart Benson will be holding down the fort during these four days. Although they are accepting of the responsibility and fully capable, I wanted to take a moment to recognize and thank them both for their willingness to step up and cover the additional workload. If you're one of the council members leaving in July, please consider returning your handbook for municipal officials, that blue binder, to be recycled and reused by new members. It's typically sixty dollars and is a vital tool and aid to new officials in giving them information in managing and conducting the affairs of the municipality. We'd be happy to take any other documents, plans, reports, or other items that you accumulated and will no longer need. Thank you.
Hey, thanks, Misty. Just a quick report. Again, I just go into a little bit more detail on the airport mining. We got some new information today. Originally, the mineral rights were ruled by our attorneys to be the city's. However, the FAA challenged that ruling. Looking back at the deed, the U.S. Department of Agriculture looked like they were the ones that had that mineral rights. The attorneys for USDA reviewed that and determined through subsequent congressional actions, the Bureau of Land Management, B L M, owns those mineral rights for the airport for sand and gravel. Did have a conference call this morning, and the results of that conference call, the B L M solicitor or their attorney will determine how and if that mining can will occur. There's two ways that that can occur, either through a contract permit, which B L M can issue, or a free individual use permit that they could issue directly to the city. The FAA still maintains that all profits raised from airport mining will have to go back into the airport's budget in order to support the airport. And of course, as Bill mentioned, we would need those funds to support the building of that ten-place hangar. We do have ten people, or eleven people on our waiting list wanting to hangar their airplanes here in Hot Springs. The B L M will also require an E A, an environmental assessment. That environmental assessment that's taken us three years plus to do by the FAA, looks like the B L M would be amenable to that being done jointly together, so that would help hopefully speed that process up. So, a lot of bureaucracy that we're going through to try to make this happen. I've coordinated with Pete Lean and Sons. They're anxious to begin mining. They would like to start as early as late this summer, but obviously, we have to get all of the details worked out. Also, on the fuel system discussion for the airport, our finance office, Misty and I will get together and do a summary of the procurement and operating costs. Garland, we'll have to get a legal document, a bill of sale drawn up to make that transfer once we get those costs, and we hope to have that available for approval for this council at the next meeting, and that's one of the reasons I wanted, again, bring that up and stress that. Looks like, just from the various records that we've reviewed, from the individual tax returns of the company to just the records that we have for fuel purchases, the fuel system operating can show a revenue, a gross, or a revenue after expenses of somewhere between ten to thirteen thousand dollars per year. And that's been pretty consistent over the ownership. So, it's not something that, that we would just be sinking money in. It would be a revenue generator for the airport. And obviously, if, as that goes on, we will also look for opportunities to offer that to a private contractor if, if that is amenable to the council. Also, on our waste pile, at the brush waste pile at the maintenance facility, had an opportunity to be in contact with several different opportunities for us to use ground-up waste. There is a company that's looking at potentially doing a biofuel project in the area, and they may want to, they want to come and look at the fuel to see if it would be a good source of their biofuel. There's also a biochar company from out of state that, or a couple of them that I've contacted. One in particular is interested, one in Colorado is not interested. They use firewood instead of chips. And of course, we'll still be willing to work with the feedlot to see if they're still interested in using it as bedding. And one of the other things, I hope to be providing the council via email, a talking paper on the sidewalk, summarizing a presentation that hopefully garners all the facts together as to why we feel as a community we need that sidewalk. To the, looking at the financial aspects, I've had the opportunity to sit down with Misty and Kim. We've got a lot of expenses that are coming up, and we've kind of highlighted those along with the money that we have set aside to help during the road construction. We realize that there's a potential that we'll lose some sales tax revenue. We have that highlighted and have come up with a figure if we have to supply some matching funds to get that project going. The critical path for that is getting the design done. Looking at the estimates that were provided by I S G, that design will cost us around three hundred and thirteen thousand, would cost around three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. I would hope that the state of South Dakota DOT would step up and make that investment for us, but that's critical because the highway design has to be done by the end of the year, we're told. So, sometime this summer, in order for that project design to take place, we need to get that, that ball rolling, and we want to make a full determination of who's going to, to be paying for that. And so, I will get that summary to the council so that you will have an idea, and we'll all be, I guess, singing off the same, same sheet of music. And if you have any inputs or questions to ask, I appreciate feedback on that also. And finally, again, I want to thank our Public Safety Committee for the report. Is there anyone on the council that wants to see the full video or have any questions? If so, we can go into executive session and, and we could view that, that video in its I see a bunch of negative head dogs. If that's the case, the report will be sent with the cover letter, and again, I appreciate the Public Safety Committee's thorough review. With that, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'd motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded, we adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned, eight twenty-eight.